All right, I call this Joint City Council Planning Commission Workshop, October 7th, 2025 at 6:00 PM to order. Uh, will Stan do the flag, uh, pledge allegiance? Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, let's do a roll call. Let's see, where's Amanda?
She not here, so I will try to do my best in her stead.
She left, she just left, didn't she?
Well, she's, she's, she's trying to fix the tech.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So, I'm just gonna try to go by memory, so maybe I'll just go around the room. Mayor Kiefer?
Present, here.
Uh, Planning Commissioner Vice Chair Irons?
Here.
Counselor Twayvis? Planning Commissioner, can I?
Here.
Uh, Planning Commissioner, uh, Mr. Jones?
Here.
Commissioner, uh, City Counselor Karen Pedigrew?
Yes.
And City Counselor Brandon Poppitt?
Yep.
Is, is that Brandon over there? Okay, okay.
I'm hiding him.
You're hiding him, Brandon's here. Planning Commissioner, uh, Michael Connell?
Here.
And City Counselor Rockwell?
Yes.
And I think that is, uh, Jennifer Layton, Planning Commissioner on the call?
I think so.
Jennifer, you're muted.
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks, Jennifer, appreciate it.
We have two excused counselors, uh, Salata and Baumgartner.
Yes.
They're both excused. All right, so takes care of that, reports. Let's go into the comprehensive plan development code.
Okay, so I thank you all for coming tonight. Um, in the, uh, oh yeah, we can do that. Um, this is an update for the comprehensive plan and Boardman Development Code project. Um, Cascadia Partners is the consulting team, excuse me, that we have hired to support this. Um, tonight, we have in the top box on your screen, we have Angie Martinez. Then in the bottom box, um, I'm a little nervous yourself because I'm still trying to get her first name right.
Thank you. My name is Anais Mate, and I would change my name in the little bar at the bottom of my photo, but it doesn't look like I'm able to on my end, so don't, no worries, I'm able to repeat myself as needed, but Anais.
Anais.
Yes.
I'll get that eventually. So, um, tonight, we're gonna talk about a couple of things. Um, big focus will be on the, um, kind of the engagement that's happened to date. Um, I think that's a lot of what we're talking about. Uh, just to bring you guys up to speed, we're in phase two of the project now. Um, so they've done some investigating, um, they've done two community outreach projects, we've collected a lot of information, and we're moving now into some conversations about just what exactly we're gonna do with the development code and what exactly we're gonna do with the comprehensive plan, so, um. Yeah, um, so with that, Angie, I will just turn it over to the two of you.
Great, thank you, Carla. Um, so, question, uh, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so, um, yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Angelica Angie Martinez, and I'm a senior planner with Cascadia Partners, and as Carla mentioned, we are the prime consultant, uh, helping the city to prepare the update of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan and Development Code. And, um, joining me today is my colleague, Anais Mate, and we are representing a team of approximately, um, approximately ten planners and urban designers who have been contributing to this project. Um, so, um, the purpose of, the purpose for today is to provide a summary of the work we have done since January of this year up until, uh, the end of August. So, we are going to start with a project overview and timeline. Um, a summary of project phases one and two. And then we will hold a, uh, we will hold a brief discussion with this group to hear thoughts and any feedback. And, uh, we are going to wrap up with, uh, next steps. And just, uh, to make the most out of our time, um, so I'll walk you through all the content first. And, um, we're going to address any questions and comments on the end when we will have, um, ample opportunity for discussion. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's start with a quick overview of the comprehensive plan and so what, what is a comprehensive plan and how does it relate with other projects? Well, um, the comprehensive plan is part of the Boardman Strategic Plan and to achieve and implement uh, this vision outlined in the strategic plan, the city is conducting five other plans or efforts. And one of this is the comple- comprehensive plan. And so a com-plan is basically a primary tool for local governments to regulate future land use and development. So, this long-range plan and the associated regulations will guide the local government in ma- in making informed decisions about land use and development for the next twenty years or more. So, what is the relationship between the com-plan and the development code? So, okay, so the comprehensive plan in Oregon is a land use policy document and map adopted by a city or a county, a county that provides policy direction for future growth, development, and conservation within a, any jurisdiction, jurisdiction. And a comprehensive plan is implemented through zoning regulations such as the development code or, um, development standards. So, once a comprehensive plan is approved by the city and by the, by the Land Consideration and Development Commission, it becomes the official guide for how land use can be, uh, how the land can be used and developed in, uh, in communities in Oregon. So, the process to update the comprehensive plan and development code in Boardman consists of four phases. Uh, the first, uh, phase, we conducted research and also the first round of engagement to learn about the Boardman community. In the second phase, um, we analyzed Boardman's current growth trajectory and based on these analyses, we developed three possible growth alternatives. And, uh, part of the engagement, uh, uh, activity for phase two, uh, was, um, an activity in which we asked the community to identify their preferred growth alternative. Um, right now, we are, uh, starting, uh, face, phase three, which is a more technical phase, which involves, uh, updating current policies and the development of code regulations. And, and, uh, the last phase of this process is the adoption phase. And we anticipate, uh, to finalize policies and rules that will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan and development code next year. Uh, there will be some changes to this project timeline, and my colleague Anais will talk more about that, uh, later in the presentation, but basically, once, uh, the, uh, once the comprehensive plan is approved by the city, it becomes the official guide for, um, future zoning laws and, and regulations. Uh, something that I want to highlight here is a public advisory committee. So, as you know, public involvement is a crucial element of this process, so Oregon state law recommends creating a public advisory committee to make sure that people from different backgrounds and different interests, uh, related to land use have a voice in this decision-making process. So, uh, the PAC, P A C, for the comprehensive plan consists of twelve members. Uh, we have met three times in this, um, nine-month period. And, uh, PAC members have provided useful input for the creation of a vision statement for the com-plan and also, uh, input, uh, for the development of content for the second round of engagement. Okay, so let's, uh, move on to the summary of the work we did in phase one. So, in this space, the quick, quick question was, what is shaping Boardman today? What, what is happening in Boardman today? So, we started with an analysis of existing conditions. And the purpose of this analysis was to research and understand the current context in Boardman related specifically to population, services, development, and nature, natural environment. And also, uh, so we, we did the, um, data research and we, uh, also verified this research, um, these findings by listening to the Boardman community. We divided this research in four themes: people, development, services, and nature. So, and today, I'm going to present findings from, uh, from both, uh, from, from, from both, uh, research methodologies from, uh, the data analysis and also the qualitative from the community listening session. So, population. Data shows that, uh, Boardman is a growing and multicultural community since 2010, uh, with Hispanic Latino population being the majority in, in major, the, the majority group. And at the same time, when, uh, during the community listening sessions, we confirmed this data and we heard from community members about the need to involve the Hispanic Latino population even more in decision-making processes like this. Um, when it comes to development, specifically housing, um, uh, data, uh, showed that cost of living in Boardman has increased significantly, significantly as has been almost everywhere. And, uh, the average cost of a home went from one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in twenty twelve to three hundred and six, sixty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. And for rent, the median monthly rent went from about sixty hundred dollars to almost fifteen hundred dollars in twenty twenty-four. And, uh, during the community sessions, community members expressed concern, concerns about the increase of these housing costs and the need of housing types that are affordable and suitable for different types of households. Um, in terms of, in terms of jobs, uh, we found that only twenty-eight percent of Boardman residents live and work in Boardman. And this data aligns with comments from community members about the need to grow and diversify the local economy, expand education and career pathways, and strengthen local services and works, workforce. Um, services, services, uh, are limited in Board, in Boardman. Data analysis show that only twenty percent of residents live within a ten-minute walk of a retail destination. The, and participants of the community sessions confirm that they usually have to drive long distances to other towns for health and family services, community amenities, and sites for recreation. And finally, nature, nature is, uh, very, it's very important for the Boardman community. Um, according to our research, sixty-four percent of people in Boardman live within a ten-minute walk of a park, and in the community, so, these organizations, people highlighted parks and the marina as favorite spots to connect with nature. At the same time, uh, many of them expressed a desire for more, uh, better connected, well-defined, public spaces. So, these are very high-level findings and takeaways from, um, from the first, uh, phase of the project. And, uh, this is just, I wanted to show you a couple images from the community listening session that was conducted on May 3rd at the Sage Center, and, um, oh, and another important thing here is that, um, takeaways from this, uh, community listening session also inform the vision statement for the com-plan, but I'm, I'm going to talk a bit more about the vision statement later in the presentation, but that, I just wanted to flat that. So now, let's move to phase two. And here, uh, so, okay, in phase one, we learned about the Boardman community, about, uh, the needs, um, and also the hopes for the community. In phase two, the quick question was, what is shaping growth? And growth in terms of development in Boardman? So, one important factor and key factor is the population growth. So, Boardman went from about three thousand people in twenty-ten to almost six thousand in twenty-twenty-four, so almost double this population in a relatively short period of time. So, with population growth, uh, the city needs to make sure that there's enough land uh, for homes, jobs, roads, services. And so, we analyzed, uh, as part of the, of the, this, this second phase, uh, we analyzed the data from development projects built in recent years and also develop, development projects in the pipeline, in the pipeline. We've found the following trend. Um, we found that, uh, industrial uses or buildings concentrate on the northeast part of Boardman. Commercial activity or commercial development remains close to the highway, especially, uh, in this, uh, near to Main Street, intersection of Main Street and, and Highway. And also, uh, that residential development happens primarily in the southwest part of town, and it's mostly single-family, detached homes. So, this leads to another question. So, if this trend continues, what Boardman could look like in the next twenty years? So, in addition to the, to data analysis for this, we, uh, did an analysis of the urban structure of Boardman. And two, two key findings here are that it's currently difficult to walk and bike safely to destinations in Boardman, and there is no clearly defined downtown. And when we were working on this, uh, analysis, we asked ourselves, well, does the trans-scenario align with the vision of the community?
Cameras are perfect, because I can see I'm green and.
Keep going, Angie, the other room joined, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I was confused for a moment, okay. So, yeah, okay, so when we were working on this, uh, on the analysis of the urban structure of Boardman, we also asked ourselves, uh, well, or does the trans-scenario align also with the, the vision of the community? So, what's the vision of the community? Well, um, we, uh, as I mentioned, uh, earlier in, uh, previous PAC meetings and in the community listening sessions, we gathered also input from the community and, uh, about the vision people have for the, for Boardman for the next twenty years, and based on that, we drafted a vision statement. And this is the, the text in which basically emphasizes that in twenty years, Boardman has access to housing and jobs and services. Um, and in, in, Boardman has safe, walkable, bike-friendly streets and public spaces. And, and it also has, uh, a sense of belonging and, and identity. And this is, this is, this is very important, uh, the identity of Boardman. So, the way in which, uh, growth is happening in Boardman now does not really support this vision for the next twenty years, the vision that the community has. So, we need to explore alternatives, alternative approaches to, to growth. So, if knowing so, something very crucial here is to know where, where the, the center of the town is located. And why? Because knowing this will help hide this, will help guide decisions about where future developments, infrastructure, and transportation investment should take place. And also, how the town will evolve over time. So, in summary, defining where the heart of Boardman is is the reference point for planning growth. So, this is why we developed three potential options of where the heart or center of Boardman could be. We call these growth alternatives. And part of, uh, or, or, uh, as part of engagement phase two, we went out to the people in Boardman and asked what route growth alternative was their favorite. So, the first option is on the north side of town. And these options leverages the existing infrastructure, the, of the area, parks, schools, restaurants, and retail stores to create a more, uh, active main street. The second option is close to the highway and focuses on improving connections over I-84. And this also leverages state funding to improve streets and transportation in the area as well as new commercial development projects in the pipeline in this area. The third option focuses on the area around City Hall, and the idea here is to extend City Central Drive to the east across Main Street to create a two-block down, downtown main street. So, this is, this is in summary what the, these three, uh, growth alterma- alternatives are about. And so, in the, uh, engagement activity, we asked people, where is the heart of Boardman? And, and people had to choose one, one of these three options. Another question, um, that we asked is, uh, what elements should define the character of the heart of Boardman? And, um, options went from trees and gateways to plazas and seaweed spaces. So, um, this is a summary of what we heard from the community. And, uh, most of the participants favored option three, the one, uh, by City Hall. And some of the most voted elements, uh, of for what people think, uh, the ele- the, the thing, the elements that people think should define the heart of Boardman are plazas, seaweed spaces, trees, gateways, vibrant open spaces, wider sidewalks. So, in this activity, um, we had about four hundred community members, um, who participated, I mean, co- combined. We, we, we did three activities. We had in-person activities, so we went to schools, we went to, uh, Wind River Elementary School, Riverside Elementary School, uh, the Rex Center, uh, we went to City Hall. So, uh, staff and consultant, and the consultant team, uh, spent one afternoon on August 21st to, and we went out and asked the community these, these two questions. And then we have an online activity. We have a community survey that was available in English and Spanish. And, um, we also had, uh, targeted outreach specifically for Spanish-speaking residents. And for these, some, uh, community leaders who we call community partners helped us. Uh, they conducted surveys in, in Spanish, so that was, uh, another activity. So, in total, we had about four hundred participants. And something that I, uh, it's important to highlight is a high number of Hispanic and Latino community members that participated in this round of engagement, which was definitely more than the previous engagement round. Okay, uh, oh, and these are some, uh, images from August 21st. Uh, Wind River, at the Rex Center, and this, this is the activity board, board that we, um, presented to the community with images of, uh, of these three growth alternatives and, um, and this is an example of, uh, this is an image from the activity held at City, City Hall Park. So, okay, I'm going to stop here and open the floor for discussion. So, uh, we have some prompt questions for reflection, uh, but we are also happy to address any comments and questions you have for, um, from, from these presentations.
Do they have any questions or comments?
It sounds like most of this has to revolve around where's the heart of Boardman? What it seems like?
That was our big focus, that's the second thing.
I would say, I mean, looking at the three different places or whatever, three is probably the most logical solution because two is right by the freeway and one is pretty much already developed and it's pretty old. And the school's in the way.
That's what they came back with the numbers, is the number showed three was the.
I, I would just say, I mean, obviously, three's got the most empty land, it's a little bit more wide open, there's still room for development there, whereas the other places don't really have that.
I, I do kind of have a question. So, when we did this survey online for our preferred heart elements, things we'd want to see in the heart, uh, heart of Boardman, um, you know, I mean, I totally love the trees one, and I totally clicked on that, but when I was looking at it just now, I was thinking, I don't just like the trees, I like that there are downtown buildings side by side with big sidewalks and places for people to sit and frequent trash cans and community members up and down on the sidewalk. So, when you look at that photo, it's in the top, right? It gives you a sense of small-town community, not just trees. And the wider sidewalks, um, in the next picture also has buildings, one right next to each other, large places for people to sit, you know, maybe even some bike racks if I'm looking at it right, and some street calming techniques in there. So, I, I mean, I'm thinking that if I'm looking at just these pictures, I'm not just picking it for the wide sidewalks, I'm picking it for the buildings too. And I was thinking about one of the. And I was thinking about one of the things that if we have a lot of growth and we're not really aligning very well, I feel like we're doing a lot to accommodate this new growth, but maybe we're not looking at our side streets. So we have a main street project in play, but are we looking at all of our side streets? Now we are at these loop road side sections. But are we looking at some of the less used side streets and, or those for sidewalks and things like that? To make it for the connectivity? I, I, those are my thoughts.
I think you made a couple of good points. I like, you know, you point out the, the white sidewalks and looking at the buildings. Okay? When you go to old towns, that's how buildings were built. You know, you look at the older part of Borman, that's how that one specific building, like it's got a couple of them connected together. There are several different businesses there or whatever. And so that does make it look like an old school. Which is what we don't really, we don't really have that here because of the town.
We don't have a downtown. So, so it's, it's, I, I like that it says wider sidewalks and I want wider sidewalks because then I can put urban furniture and I can, you know, I can have things there and I can have trees. But I also like that it has all those buildings there. And when I think about the heart of Borman, I'd like to see it be maybe a little more prescriptive about what kind of businesses go into the heart of Borman. Should they be more city-centered, um, justice-related or services rendering? Or should they be Dollar Generals and?
I always think of downtown campus. Yeah, downtown campus is a perfect example of a small town downtown. The trees, the sidewalks, sitting, the restaurants that you can sit outside, they have city, city, um, official buildings down there. They have apartments in brown, in old brownstone-like buildings. Granted, it's a lot older downtown than we would have. Our stuff would be, would be newer. But they have, they have such a wide variety of stuff on that one three-block section of downtown. Um, I mean, just literally everything from a fast food place to an Ace Hardware built in there to apartments right next to that, to, um, an arcade. And then it just, it just, there's no, there's no, uh, defined theme other than uh, businesses that are, that are thriving, you know, because there's people walking all over down there just because it's a comfortable place to be. The trees covered, you know, almost the whole street. And it's diagonal parking like that. You can sit out there and drink coffee on the sidewalk.
And those main, and those main street businesses are typically, I mean, even Hermiston, they're all.
Side by side.
Side by side.
Yeah, some of them built into one building just with, with walled off places, you know?
So, so then maybe how you could drive something like that is through your development code. Require zero, zero setbacks on your sidewalks for, so that you require the buildings are next to each other. And I think it's less about saying who can or can't come in, the more about if they do come in, how they develop, how they design.
Right. So maybe it's a facade, a facade rule, you know, that you wouldn't, you wouldn't dream trying to go to Leavenworth. You couldn't imitate that.
Well, and Condon, Condon made it, made it a point to say, we're going to keep this, uh, the front storefront are going to be developed, but they're going to stay within this certain theme of, of, uh, you know, the country and, and, uh, the, I don't want to say older town because it's not, they upgraded it. But it looks like, it looks like a town that's been there a long time, but it's all clean and, you know, and they did that on purpose.
Regardless of the business. Good point. You cannot, Leavenworth's a good point. You cannot build there unless it looks exactly the way they tell you it looks, including the signage.
So I just think that we have a brand new open area. This is a great time for us to think about what we want it to look like instead of just taking whatever comes. So again, you made a comment of Dollar General. It's not that you don't allow, allow a Dollar General. But you, you say these are the design standards. You have to have storefront that looks like this. You don't get to have.
It's not going to be all, uh, what are they called? Modern design.
No, it's Dollar General design that's from here to Tennessee. They're all the same.
They're all the same.
Even their corporate office, their headquarters are, are the same.
But if you go to other cities, you know, Walmart was, you know, the Dollar General back in its day. Depending on the city, they said, no, this is how it's going to look. If you're going to put a Walmart here, this is how it has to look. Whereas that's why they all look different in certain.
So it's not just about the facade. It'd be about where you put all those people who are going to park. Maybe they don't get to park in front of your business. Maybe they have to go around back alley and park in a back parking lot.
Downtown Hermiston's that way. They have parking on the back side.
Absolutely. So there's.
They just have limited parking.
And they have limited parking on the street. So I think that there's some talking points for us to go over.
I feel like I'll, I'll speak up just quickly here. So I feel like there's, there's an interest in kind of the design element as well. Um, but you are also working through an economic opportunities analysis will help, which will also help inform kind of the programming of the spaces that you're trying to build and create. Um, and so the comprehensive plan is kind of a, a perfect place where we can express the urban form through standards, uh, design, et cetera. But then also bring in some of that programmatic work that the EOA is doing in terms of identifying what are the types of industries that you want to be attracting to Borman in order to activate those wider sidewalks or in order to, you know, lend itself to the, the design elements that you want to have in, in Borman. So these are really great ideas. Um, and I would, I would con- ask you to continue talking about these items because this is the kind of fodder that we want to be able to capture in a comprehensive plan. And I will say though, at the same time, that the, the tension that exists as, as you are all likely very aware is how do you incentivize the kind of development you want to see in Borman? Whether it's mixed use, whether it's particular types of businesses without stifling their arrival through really restrictive development code standards. So that balancing act is something that we're, we're going to lean towards you to try and, you know, think through and, and figure out.
Yeah, I mean, our, our core, core place, the core place, we're continuing to get the ability to put these businesses in a downtown area is coming from our big business, which whether it's pork, whether it's the, you know, the, the, the potato, the processing plants, Amazon, that's, that money is what builds, that's what makes people want to become people that have worked there and made money is what allows them to open businesses. You know, if you wanted to open a, um, an ice cream store down there, more than likely, it's not somebody coming with a Braskin Robbins from out of town. It's going to be somebody that opens one that's, that's here and made money and want to open a business. They'd be more attuned to, to doing it like, like in a downtown setting.
Versus a corporate.
Yeah, yeah. And so, and so we can't forget about the, where, where our money comes from, obviously. Cause that's, if you look at the housing, um, increase is phenomenal. I mean, the, the price of, of it twelve years ago versus now is, is unbelievable. And that has a lot to do with just a couple of places and wages. And not everybody, you know, the people that work in what we consider town aren't all making that kind of money yet. I don't think the wages have kept up with it. So we got to folks stay attuned to the busi- big businesses that are paying the wages and make sure that they continue to grow also to keep people employed to make that money. So we can have people investing in downtown.
Well, and housing issues come from the lack of, so costs go up when there are fewer.
Well, and now we have some certain amount of people that are willing to pay for, can pay for now. Yeah. I mean, the average median price of the home just blows me away from what it was.
So I do want to get back to though, the other idea that if we have a lot of growth, which, you know, clearly we've got twenty-six hundred more people here now, fourteen years later than when we started with two thousand and ten. But when I look about the town and look at streets and sidewalks and lighting and those kinds of things, not every area of Borman is developed to accommodate that population. Is there any kind of a look around town about sidewalks and streetlights or? So not so much on streetlights. Um, uh, we worked collaboratively with UEC on that front. Um, the, both the Parks Master Plan and the TSP have, uh, sidewalk. So the TSP deals with pedestrian bike and then the other kind of multimobiles. So e-bike, you know, that whole thing. Um, the Parks Master Plan also addresses that. Um, so the regulation of those things then land in the development code. So that's what you're going to see. So the TSP workshop that we had, sorry, they all kind of run together now about a month ago at the port. Um, one of the figures in there was the bike and pet projects. So that's where you'll see that. So there is an identified need that we have a lot of places where sidewalks don't connect. We have missing places. Um, so the TSP has called that out. Not on every local street, but it has certainly on the main streets. So our arterial and collectors for sure. Um.
We'll have annual sidewalk improvements every year. This, this year was just connected to Main Street. Next year will be Northeast Front. We'll always have a sidewalk being done.
So I'm just going back to your question. What changes can be aligned growth, community's vision? The current growth path likely will get Borman to its desired future in twenty years. So what are we missing? Yeah, I think that'll come out more so as they work through, um, some of the work products that they're, that they're working on. So we've got a development code audit that they've been working on. And then there's some comprehensive plan kind of policy conversations that we're going to be having, um, that will eventually come, come through the pack. You'll probably hear them in a future, um, joint work session like this. And then as we work towards actually developing the comp plan and, and inputting those policy statements and then moving towards the development code. And again, the TSP and the EOA and the Parks Master Plan will all inform this final project as well.
It's also accurate. Go ahead.
What's the standard width of a sidewalk that we might be talking about?
So you, we're focusing, so when we adopted the public work standards last month, I think, um, it's a five-foot wide sidewalk. That does not mean that when we talk about a downtown plan, that sidewalk couldn't be larger. I don't disagree with both of your comments about, you know, when you go to Leavenworth or you go to some of these other communities and you walk down a sidewalk that's a main street and it's, six isn't really wide. And if you need to get to about eight before you kind of have the room for the trash can, the street trees, the bench. When you start having those things.
And New Matella, I mean, Irigan is like eight foot. They are really wide.
On set, on their seven thirty or whatever.
They're really wide sidewalks.
I'm going to.
I'd say this, these two tables are probably about ten feet. Just to give you an idea of how
Yep.
wide that sidewalk could potentially.
Well, see, and that doesn't look very wide.
It doesn't.
I mean, I would take up this whole table.
Put a tree, a garbage can, a bench, and then you put the storefront puts out there's their thing of wares by the street. There's barely a spot to walk.
And Main Street's six feet. I guess. I know it's not what it is. That's why I'm bringing up the big stamp, these two ones.
So the interesting thing about this is, so I moved here in ninety-eight and was on the city council in two thousand, two thousand and four. This has been a topic that we've been talking about since way, since then. And I'm sure it's been a talk since before. So it's been on the council's mind and the citizens' minds for, we're going into twenty-five years and plus. And we live in a unique place on how do we do this? Uh, create this downtown. I remember having a conversation with the community. Said we needed to have a pool and all that other good stuff. We had maps and we kind of did something similar to this. And talked about what the storefronts had to have on there. When the, trying to make the downtown on the north side of the freeway are downtown. And it was like, how do we do that? You know? Uh, and it's been on the top and I, we just have a unique thing, situation here that we've been talking about for a long time. And it's, it's a very difficult. And you see the, the twelve things to get and be able to, you know, what we would like to have. It's like, maybe we got to figure out how to get businesses to want to come here. Maybe, I, I mean, we have, you know, a lot of individuals who are starting to try to do businesses, but how do we get the other stuff? I mean, we have food pods and we have, uh, things like that. But I, you know, how do we get businesses to want to come here? You know, to sit, to help create this. And then where are we going to put them? To make a downtown. The biggest piece of land that we have, we just sold it to Good Shepherd or somebody else sold it to Good Shepherd. And so that takes up that big chunk. And so, you know, I'm not saying it's invincible. But we've been talking about for a long time and trying to tackle this. And how do we do it? And I'm glad we're doing this, but anybody thinks that it's going to be solved in real quickly is smoking some weed.
You know, I think, I'm, I'm just going to start harping on, we need a new post office that is handicap accessible. And wherever you put it could be the name of point. Of where your downtown is.
We've talked about that.
Well, then let's stop talking about it. And get on it because I really think that if I would go up and take one for the town and fall down in front of the post office and point out to them, it's because it's not handicap accessible.
All right, Ms. York.
Don't do it there. I take care of the post office sidewalk. Don't go there and do it.
No, I want, I want.
Three minutes and then we're going to wrap it up.
I think, I think that handicapping is the way we're going to get a new post office. I think a new post office, if we would get a new post office on this side of town, there's your beginning.
I, I don't.
About that.
Yeah.
So you can talk now.
Okay, I'll talk really quickly. It comes down to increased decreased risk, okay, and increased incentive. That's what it comes down to any developer. And they're going to want to see what are they getting out of it? And right now, there is no increased incentive and there's no decreased risk. It just comes down to that. So you're going to want to, I think we have the, the different businesses in town, like the post office, but how are we going to get them to move? Well, the best way to do it is build them a building. And then just say, here you go.
And let them rent our new building.
Yeah, you can rent the new building.
Yeah.
But otherwise, good luck because there's no increased incentive and there's no decreased risk.
One of our consultants has a comment.
Oh no, I was just going to a- allow you to continue finishing your thoughts. And then I was going to, I was going to recap and wrap us up.
Okay.
Okay.
We're going to give you about a minute to do that. We need to stop at about six fifty because we have to relocate rooms.
Okay, okay. Um, so this is great information. Um, if you can move to the next slide, uh, yeah. So we're going to be moving on and kind of crafting this fine, this, this beefy, uh, phase of the comprehensive plan update. Um, next slide actually probably a bit more important. Um, but a couple of things we're going to work on next is we want to identify what are those cruxy policy considerations that we need to figure out through the comprehensive plan that are not necessarily being already organized through your TSP, your EOA, your HPS, your Parks Master Plan? You are in a really unique place right now where you are updating a significant number of technical documents that help support the comprehensive plan. Um, so you'll see a couple of, of schedule changes that will help, um, reflect and align all of these various planning efforts you're doing. But what I'm sort of hearing in the room today is that maybe one of the key focus areas of this comp plan update is kind of giving the, giving some more legs to that EOA. So thinking more and more about economic development and thinking a lot about how to craft that downtown. What, what kind of policy framework do we want to set forth? And then, and then codify through the development code in order to bring in the kinds of businesses and also to help kind of standardize the development you want to see in very specific parts of your town. So I'm, I'm, I'm hearing some really good fodder here for the kinds of policy questions we want to be asking ourselves. Um, we're going to be moving into engagement with the PAC, of course, but then also thinking about what other stakeholders we might want to bring into this process that can give us a little bit more insight into the how and the why behind these particular policy questions we want to be asking ourselves. And in this case, it might be more economic development. Um, so we will be doing that first and over probably the next six months or so. Um, as we wait for some other really key pieces like your HPS to wrap up um, so that we can drive implementation of all of those elements and the comprehensive plan through zoning map and development code updates, which really gives your pol- your new policy framework legs. And that's really where rubber hits the road. So we're going to focus first on establishing this policy framework for you. And then we're going to work into developing the, the implementing mechanisms for it. So more information soon, uh, and a better schedule to kind of help you track how things are falling into place. Um, so we look forward to coming back and engaging you in more conversations and then also giving you an update on how things are moving along. And that's my, and six fifty-two.
Thank you. Nicely done. Well, thank you. I'd like to thank everybody, uh, for their comments and participating. Uh, the individuals who gave the presentation. Uh the individuals who gave the presentation and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.